Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Seeing that we have a quorum, we can call the roll.
All right. Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Welsh.
Here.
And Mr. Fior de Mondo. Not present for the record is Mr. Kapuzi, Mr. Montressor, and Ms. Phillips.
Can we stand, please, for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to America. The republic stands to the nation. Is it liberty to the sprawl?
It is Thursday, October 10th. It's a meeting of the Haverford Township Planning Commission. The first item on our agenda is the 978 Township Line Road Sketch Plan. You sure and state your name slowly and your address and roll.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bazydlo, B-A-Z-Y-D-L-O. You want my address, my office address, correct?
Yes.
920 West Chester Pike, upper floor, Haverford Town, Pennsylvania. And I'm here today on behalf and with the equitable owner of 978 Township Line Road, Mustafa Jones, who's here. And we also have present with us the architect Bruce Cheatham. So I am going to, let me just click over to our... And here? So just a brief overview of what our proposal is here. We're proposing a three-story mixed-use commercial building. The ground floor would be a private basketball... Wait, that's the wrong one? Hold on, hold on, hold on. You showed me how to do it and then I failed to do it correctly, anyway. So the ground floor would be the commercial space and serve as a private basketball training facility. And I'm going to have Mustafa come in and explain exactly what this business is so that the context of this building makes a lot more sense. And then in your, the packet that I gave up, you can see the upper floors are going to be residential with four units on each floor for a total of eight residential units and the commercial basketball training facility on the first floor. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself and explain a little bit about your, who you are, your business, and what you're looking to do on this property?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Mustafa Jones, former college athlete and professional athlete. And pretty much I run a training/mentorship for young athletes, both men and women. I started as young as eight years old with novice players and I go all the way up to my pro guys and girls that play internationally, some in the G League. And pretty much I just, my ideas for this gym is a private space for kids to be able to come train. Also, I have some kids who after school they need a place to do homework, things like that. And where I am now, it's not a great space for that just because it's a training facility for adults as far as fitness.
Where are you now?
I'm at Ballackinwood in AFC Fitness. So pretty much, yeah, I just want to have a space where kids are able to come work out and it wouldn't be a lot of kids in and out. I do a lot of small group sessions, if any, mainly one-on-one. So the time that I'm spending is really focusing on the individual and giving them my full attention for that hour, hour and a half. I even talk to kids over the phone. I have my college guys that are playing at Division One schools right now that are transitioning as freshmen and I'm pretty much available to them 24/7. Whenever they need advice, a ear to listen without being judged from their parents or anything, I'm there for them. So just want to provide a space that is suitable and just a great opportunity that I didn't have young when I was training, playing, growing up. That's pretty much it.
So it's not like for tournaments? It's not for any sort of large event space? It's like for one-on-one and small group training, correct?
Yes. This is, this is really just training, basketball training.
It seems that there are no stands?
Yes, no stands, like there wouldn't be no leagues run out of here. None, nothing of that sort. It's really for training, to get guys better, girls better, and help them understand how to cultivate and build resiliency, self-discipline, perseverance, all the things that I did in my career from playing at two different colleges, transferring, having to find my way, a mentor of mine passing. So I just, it's something that really sticks out to me because with that happening, I went through college on my own. I had nobody there for me to help me find my way, transferring. It was a tough time, but I got through it. So now I want to be that light to help someone else be able to see. That's all.
So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the technical issues, if that's good with you guys. Or do you have any questions for him, first of all?
We may, but maybe we should hold those until you're done and then we can pose our questions and have, are there any? But we'll see if there are any comments from the people here.
Okay. I just thought it was important to you because it's definitely a different proposal, so I wanted to make sure that we laid the foundation of what's actually happening here because it's important for the context of this, actually what the building is and the site and that sort of stuff. So, you know, you see the township, the letter that came from the township after the engineer was reviewed. So a lot of the dimensional concerns of this property come from the fact that it is zoned for R1A, which we know is a residential zoning and we're proposing a commercial mixed-use here. And so I just kind of wanted to walk through first in regards to some of that. Why, this isn't really a great lot for a single-family residential home and that's probably why this has been vacant and undeveloped now for a while. So if you look at, it's on Township Line, first of all. So we know it's on Township Line, which is a busy, busy road. I live in the township as well. I travel on Township Line. I know it's busy. So you have a busy road. Next, directly adjacent to this property is the dentist's office that has the tooth as the sign. And then next to it on the other side is, there's actually an overhead view in the packet, too, if you want to look at it. There is a park. And then next to the sort of forested grass area, if you continue going, you know, further towards West Chester Pike, that's when you run into the Norristown High Speed Line stop. And then you run into an office building. And when you go the other-
What's the stop on the Norristown line?
Township Line.
Township Line. It's the Township Line stop.
It's the Township Line stop, yeah. And it's, it's literally just, it's less than a block away from where we're talking about. And when you head the opposite direction on Township Line, you do have some residential properties on the suburban side. Notably, most of these properties are not facing Township Line. They might have their side against it, but the front of the house is on the smaller residential streets. And when you cross over onto the Philadelphia side, you have some commercial shopping centers a little bit down the road. And directly across the street is the Cobb Creek Golf Course, which I think we are all aware is undergoing renovations or there's a plan for it to become with golf training facilities and a whole renovation project. So it's not going to be residential on the other side of the street, too. So we have this parcel that's kind of zoned for one thing, but when we look at what's around it, especially on the road that it's on, it's not really conducive to that use. And I think one of the greatest, the best thing that I can point out is that this was a lot that was available for development during the real estate boom of the past several years and we don't have a single-family house built on it. So with that, I think that when we look at what an appropriate use of this would be, we can kind of look towards what's going on with our proposed comprehensive plan in the township and some of the goals that the comprehensive plan may have and how this could further it. So one of them is to provide a range of housing types. And with this, we're providing something-
Excuse me, Jennifer, can I call you Jennifer?
Yeah.
When you refer to the plan, are you referring to the existing plan?
I'm referring to the proposed plan. I know.
It's actually still in the process of being drafted. It's not like there's a fixed proposed plan, but-
So I was looking at the last proposed plan that had come out and talking about kind of the general, some general goals. I think that, without being actually too specific, but of providing diversified housing in the township and hope, with the hope of, you know, maybe having younger generations be able to stay in the township around their families. And there aren't a ton of modern two-bedroom units available for people in the township. This would be providing that sort of housing type. It is, like I said, also right next to public transit. That goes both directly into the city and also out to Norristown, so it has a lot of opportunities for public transit use. In the last, you know, propose, and I understand this is all proposed, but, you know, it was, one of the thoughts was to have this sort of development in the Haverford Road Corridor because of the public transit access, where you might be able to have a little bit of a higher intensity use and increased public transit use. So why this is not on a commercial corridor, it's kind of in this no man's land of we have a mix of offices and transit and commercial businesses and homes here. And we're proposing something that is a mix of what's already there. And another goal, I think, for any township is to promote businesses and tax revenue. We have a vacant parcel that's been there for quite a while and we could-
And it's been quite a while? How long?
So I know that the current owner purchased it in 2021 and it had been foreclosed on. Looking back on the records, as far back as 2007, which is when I could see pictures of it, it didn't really look like the property was being used. It was overgrown. The current owner, he's under contract to purchase it right now, contingent on zoning approval, also thought of developing it into three residential units and it didn't, it wasn't financially viable for him. So it's been vacant and cleared since, I think, 2020. And there had been a house that had been vacant and deteriorating. The property hasn't been maintained since at least 2007. And I don't have the ability to look back any further because that's the last pictures I could see. So, but it's, it's been quite a bit of time. And there was a single-family home on it, but again, this lot's been sitting, not used as a single-family home for at least 15 years and maybe more. So, you know, we could get a business in there, increase tax revenue. We have a small business. He's also planning on living in the building, so we're having a small business owner living in the town, working in the town. And so then I just kind of, with that general overview of how this might be an effective and, you know, highest and best use of this property, let's talk a little bit about some of the other issues raised in the letter, if that's okay?
Please.
We'll circle back to zoning stuff, too, because I think a lot of this has to do with zoning. But, so, so yeah, number one and two are about zoning and I'm going to come back to that to talk a little bit more. Number three was, it was common about adding lighting. Absolutely. That's absolutely planned. This was an initial sketch plan. It's not shown yet, but there will be lighting, parking lot entrances, all the required spots. That just makes sense for sensible development. So I don't think that's, that will be addressed. Yes.
Well, I'm sorry.
Bruce, come on up, come up and put your name and business address on the record.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bruce Cheatham. So-
Cheatham?
Yes, sir. Cheatham, Cheatham, whatever. I say a little wrong sometimes myself. But yeah, this is definitely just a planning stage so far. We have a civil engineering team that will be on board with us. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing, you know, we aren't holding any stops for this. We just wanted to get it through the zoning process before we started putting all of our engineers on the project. Just wanted to, you know, just to clarify that one, but yeah.
And on that note, too, we're going to have you come back and talk about the parking. But some of these other issues about why we don't have a traffic city done, storm management plan, that sort of thing, those are all very costly and all very extensive. And the reason we're here applying for the sketch plan, where we went through the sketch plan was really so we could identify what we needed to talk about and the variances we would need when we went to zoning. And then when we know the project is feasible with zoning, this is what a lot of these, like more detailed plans would be coming in to try to, just try to save some costs as this is a small business owner, not a major developer. So it wasn't out of, you know, trying to hide anything or out of any sort of mal-intent. It was really just trying to move this project along in the most cost-effective way possible. So in terms of the parking, and again, this is largely, so we're talking about number four on the, on the, on the letter. Yeah, under Township Code 2, parking spaces are required for each residential unit, which brings you to 16 parking spots and we only have 17. As I mentioned before, the operator of the business is also going to be living in the property in one of these units. His car is accounted for in the residential parking. And as we went through, this is largely a one-by-one, one-on-one training facility. And it's also with parents who usually drop their children off. So we have at least one dedicated space for anybody coming in. There's a possibility we could talk about other parking spaces where there's currently roll-up gates. Come up to the microphone. So why don't you talk a little bit more about some of the other, like, parking options that might be available on this property?
So we do have the 17 spaces at the very front. But on the side, there is roll-up doors where mostly it's going to be used for large equipment that's getting pushed in and out of the building. But this can also act as an overflow in case there, you know, any parents stick around for the trainings and need somewhere to park and they don't have something readily available in the parking lot. Even though we do have that extra spot, just in case, you know, just in case there's two or three cars or something like that, where they are able to pull off to the side here where they will be out of the traffic and out of the main actual roadway. We imagine that this side portion would only get used probably maybe by the owner and just staff, you know what I mean, that kind of thing. There is trash, there's, in the floor plans, there's a trash chute that comes down to the one garage door on the right side. So we do have a plan for how that will be removed from the property, but outside of that, it's really just going to be a space used by the owners and if, you know, a little overflow parking.
And then I guess while I have you up here, let's just talk about the stormwater management. Can you just talk about what's there existing already and some ideas about, we might have about what we would do to control water on the property?
Yeah, there's going to be-
Come to the microphone, sorry.
There will be an entire plan for the stormwater management. I have a meeting with the civil team. We just haven't locked in with them completely at this moment. We're waiting to talk to you guys before we move things forward with them. But that will very much so be a part of the process. There is some stuff going on. There's a drainage right there. You can see it in the 3D a little bit. That's an existing feature that's on the lot that we plan on keeping. We are building around that. So like, I don't have the full scope of where that goes to yet, but my civil team has already been, you know, on the job looking at what will be necessary to complete that process.
All right. Let's see. And we talked about, again, we'll have a traffic study done. We just don't have it done right now. My suspicion, again, I don't want to talk out of turn, but you know, we don't have a ton of traffic being added to Township Line Road to this for the level of traffic that's already there. So, but what I wanted to talk about, circle back to, was the zoning issues because that's where we get into, in terms of, let's actually go with the ability to use technology. So we obviously aren't meeting a lot of the requirements of the R1A zoning district because we're not building a single-family home on the lot. So I think what we need to do is kind of start to look at what, what kind of zoning is closest to what we're proposing. And I was looking through the code and I was looking at the O2, which is an office residential zoning district. And the reason I was looking at that is because of the purpose of that district, which is to kind of serve as a buffer between main thoroughfares, major arteries in the township, and residential zoning districts. And I think that's exactly what this parcel is, is that we have a parcel that is right along a major artery and then there's residential kind of around, around it, right? And that this can serve as that buffer between the major artery and the residential districts. And when you look at it in terms of our proposal, when you look at the O2 district, we're meeting our lot size requirements, we are meeting the max height requirement, we're meeting the front yard requirement. In terms of the side yards, seven feet are required on both sides in an O2. We have five. The reason for five is if you look, we need to fit a full-size basketball court in here and we need a couple of offices. Come on, come on in and talk about the dimensional requirements and why we came up with this footprint of the building.
The court itself plays a big part in how much of the square footage we are taking of the lot. And with that said, we do need just a couple of offices for the, for staffing purposes and training purposes. And that's really what would kind of determine those, those side yard setbacks. So we tried our best to pull the building from the front and to give the parking a bit of the relief that we're looking for is, you know, going to be definitely the side and rear yard.
And in terms of, in terms of the rear yard, the building was pushed back to allow for the parking. We couldn't, because of the demands of the size of the building for the full-size court, there couldn't be parking in the rear. It just wouldn't fit. And so in order to get the most part, like to get adequate parking in the front, this is where the building had to be placed. I will also say that the home that was there prior was in the back portion of the lot as well. Obviously, this is a bigger structure, so that's kind of irrelevant. But when you look at, if you look at the overhead view, you can see that while this is back, it's not going to be only five feet from somebody else's house, which, you know, when we think about rear yards, we're thinking about often like, you know, two houses front to back from each other. And if you are supposed to have 25 feet and you only have five, now your house is right on top of someone else's house. And that's not the circumstances with here. So there's still, you know, there's no fire safety concerns, there's no privacy concerns. There's none of the typical things that we worry about when we're talking about, you know, moving a building too close to the rear property line. And just because of how these lots are laid out, it's also not something that could be developed and put, you know, another structure that far, that close to it. So that was the rear yard. And so with that, again, I think that a lot of our issues that we know about, we knew about the zoning issues. We were prepared to go to the zoning board. That's, the application's probably going to go in next week for that. Maybe with some tweaks after we have a conversation with you guys. And from there, you know, we'll have, when we come back with a final plan, we'll have a lot of these other things addressed.
Do you have any comments on the SADO, item five?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any comments on the SADO, the subdivision and land development ordinance?
In terms of-
It's item five.
Item five? I'm not exactly sure what they were asking about there other than we need to file more paperwork, which we know we do.
For sure.
If there's anything more extensive than that, I kind of assumed that was one of those things that we need to comply with and file the necessary paperwork. And we would file, follow that procedure as required.
I guess, David, are you asking, have you reviewed this application against the regulations of the subdivision land development ordinance to see if there's any waivers that you would need? Have you identified any potential waivers that you would need from the subdivision land development ordinance at this time?
I don't believe so.
Not waivers, no. We were just basing it off of the overall zoning requirements for the lot.
So my recommendation to you is as you, as you consider your plan and seek zoning relief from the zoning hearing board concurrently with doing a land development plan, you will also need to design it in accordance with the subdivision land development ordinance, the SADO. So your civil engineering team will understand kind of what that means. What happens, though, is that if you can't meet any of the regulations that are required under that ordinance provision, even if you have your zoning approvals, but you don't meet the SADO ordinance regulations, then you would need to seek waivers. So we are advisory, so we can't make any decisions and we're not the people that you need to convince for your zoning relief. Obviously, that's the zoning hearing board. But it's the Board of Commissioners that you would need to get those waiver requests from. And so typically, the more waivers you have, and this is a very unique plan, I think, not, not consistent with kind of what the zoning imagined for the space. So I'm talking now, so I'm just going to keep talking.
Oh, keep going, please.
So-
All in agreement.
So from a mission standpoint, I think, gentlemen, that your mission is very laudable and certainly beneficial to the community. So from, from that standpoint, you know, kudos to working with the community and providing that safe space for kids. So I had just a few questions, kind of talking about the overall scope of the, of the project. I appreciate the introduction of apartment units closer to transit options. That's always a good thing to be able to walk to the high-speed line. You said eight, eight-bedroom, or I'm sorry, eight dwelling units, correct? How many bedrooms in each?
Two bedrooms each.
Two bedrooms, so there's going to be-
And all bedrooms are over 150 square feet. I'm just throwing that out there because we were very, we wanted these to be very comfortable units. This isn't going to be, you know, 100-square-foot bedrooms. We can fit maybe a twin-sized bed kind of situation. We wanted whoever's going to live in these apartments to feel comfortable and want to live there forever.
What is the total square foot area that the apartment, our apartment units will have approximately?
I think we're around 800 square feet, maybe a little bit less. There's an area plan that I have somewhere around here that gives the specifics of every unit, but-
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't, we didn't get a second-floor plan that I saw in the packet.
Yes, so there is a small version of it in the packet that I handed off.
Oh, did I miss that?
But the units on the, the second and third floor are pretty much identical.
Yeah. So we had submitted them prior.
I had a larger zoning set, but we were requested to pull back some of the information. And I can send that to you guys if, you know, if you find it interesting.
I mean, if, if you're proposing to go before the zoning hearing board next, then I would just, we can look out for that information later when you come back. So the-
But it would be about 800 square feet.
About eight, okay. So if we're looking at eight, 800-square-foot two-bedroom apartments, right, on the second and third floors?
Yep.
Excuse me. So it looks like it's a full-size court. Is that correct? Is that like a standard? Is there, I mean, there's a difference between like a college size? Please educate me. I don't know the difference.
There is.
There's, high school is 84 feet and college and MBA is 94 feet. And just speaking to me training pro athletes as well as young kids, I just was like, let's go ahead and just go full out with the MBA-sized court because we need an MBA three-point line just for training purposes. I can't have my men and women that play professionally training on a high school three-point line, which is, I believe, around 19 feet, where the MBA three-point line is around 23.6. So, yeah, just, just for those reasons.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I can, I can certainly understand wanting then that, that size court. I don't know if it's possible, though, and I don't know what your training schedule looks like, if it's possible to do like a three-quarters of a court, if you're necessarily looking at needing to have kind of the full length of the court for running drills or things like that. But if you're, if, if you're able to accomplish your training goals with like a three-quarter length, and I'm just thinking of that only because the, the footprint of the building is eating up a lot of the space. And so when you start looking- And so when you start looking into your SADO requirements for, and your stormwater management ordinance requirements for designing your stormwater facility, looking at your parking, your circulation, the number of parking spaces that you have, landscape buffers, all of the other things that get triggered when you go through a land development like this, you, you want to be judicious in the amount of space and footprint that your building takes up, just because you are looking at pretty much taking the zoning and throwing it out the window and proposing something completely unexpected in its place. So...
And I do have a lot of those calculations, it's just a little hard to see, but it's up there in the corner.
But, but in terms of, I mean, is it, so I guess the question then is, is it possible to achieve your training goals with a shortened court?
Yes, it's very possible to achieve those goals. Again, when I first reached out and connected with Bruce, I just kind of gave him a rough, just vision of what I saw, and possibly even having maybe one other trainer work alongside me with another player, just because it's one of me. Right now, I run my business by myself. I start at 5:30 in the morning, and I work pretty much all day going up until about 10 o'clock at night, every day. Like, I left clients today to be here. So, yeah, I'm in and out all day. I'll get a lift in, I'll go home, eat, take a quick hour, maybe hour and a half nap, and then by 3 o'clock, I'm going back to the gym, and 3 to 10 every day. Saturday, Sunday, I'm working all day as well. I haven't taken a break in two years, to be honest. Just to try to fund this plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, it's just something that is very meaningful to me. And just, my idea was, if we're going to do it, let's go all out, and if we have to pull back, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. Well, it's good to know.
Just to introduce, but the question is, can you run a clinic or instruction or the program you want to run without having full-court games?
Uh, yes, again, it's...
Full-court at regulation?
Yeah, as long as it could be the half-court, it's still regulated like 94 by, well, not 94, it would be the half-court, but the width of the court is, I think, 52. As long as the width is that of the MBA-sized court, I can use a half-court with that width.
So in theory, the building could be shorter, but it can't be narrower.
Yeah, not narrow.
Okay.
It could be shorter, and we can pull back, and again, half-court would be fine.
Yeah. I'm, I'm assuming that if you shorten the court, it shortens the building, it could potentially then limit the number of apartment units above. So from a financial standpoint, so when you just, when you go before the zoning hearing board and you make your case to them, typically what they're looking for is what is the minimum relief necessary in order to get you to where you want to go? That is what the legal kind of parameters of, of zoning hearing boards consider. So if you can effectuate your mission, still perform the high-quality training and mentorship with a smaller court size to come more into conformance with what the zoning ordinance would otherwise allow or regulate. You know, in terms of then what that, what that does to your financials, because I'm assuming that there's some correlation between the number of units that you have. So, financial hardship isn't a real thing under, under the law, under zoning. So if you have to cut out a few units in order to get the approval, I just want you to know that that could be a potential and a discussion when you're before the zoning hearing board as well.
Yeah, I was, I was prepared for that mentally. Just wanted to get feedback tonight.
Absolutely.
That was my main thing.
I'm, I'm glad that you've kind of already thought about a lot of these opportunities and potential kind of navigation. So I'm, I'm glad that you come prepared.
For sure, for sure.
And open to, to feedback. So, okay. Right, so you already discussed, and I know that it, it seems like you and your counsel are aware of the, of, of just the multitude of kind of zoning variances that you will need. It's pretty much from like every single zoning regulation for the district. So throwing it, throwing it out the window and just kind of coming up with something else. You said you, you mostly work by yourself, so are, do you, so you do not have any employees now?
No.
Do you envision having any in the future?
If I had a full court, yes. But if it's going to be half, it will just continue to operate and move the way it's moving now.
Okay.
And everything should still work fine.
Okay.
To be honest.
Okay. And then, yeah, I'm just thinking for parking units for two bedrooms. Okay. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think, again, I'm not on the zoning hearing board, so whatever I say here doesn't necessarily go to them, or they wouldn't care my opinion of it. But I think that it's, again, I commend you for your dedication to your work.
Thank you.
And thank you for your, for your efforts and what you do.
Thank you.
I think that this sounds like a really interesting opportunity to take an underutilized piece of land and turn it into something really productive and meaningful. I think it's beneficial to have additional housing units, having multifamily units within proximity to the high-speed line station, so that's always a plus when it comes from like the planning perspective. I do think that you have somewhat of a, of a big ask ahead of you to, to make this request before the zoning hearing board. So the only, the only thing, other thing that I just want to offer, just words of encouragement to just come prepared, it sounds like you're very well organized, and just make sure to ask for everything, but do consider, again, those SADO regulations, because I just want to caution against going for zoning without doing at least a little bit more with the SADO work, because if it turns out that you get the zoning approval that you need, but when you go to engineer it, it turns out that you need additional zoning relief, you will have to go back to the zoning hearing board to modify.
What?
So if, if granted an approval, but it turns out that you need additional relief, you're going to have to go back again. So that's just more time and money for you. So I, my recommendation is just to go through all of the ordinances as much as you can ahead of time, understanding that it's a balance between spending the money on engineering before approvals versus after, just so that you're well aware of all of the things that you need.
Okay. I appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Other comment, is there anybody here tonight who wishes to comment on this proposal? Any of the...
I think they're all here.
Probably.
Yeah.
Sitting that way. If I may...
On the commission's...
If I may, as the architect, what was previously stated, to define all of your constraints and then look at your actual building, because you're, you're working backwards. You're seeing how much can fit, but you have all these constraints that you did not look at. So once you do that, you may have to redo the design, making maybe a half-court the priority, and see how that works with all the constraints that you have.
Yeah. And, and we're completely open to that, but like Mustafa said, we, we would like to shoot for, you know, closer to the border of what we're able to get, and if we need to pull it back, then we're okay with that. But I, I would much prefer to have a full court.
Sure.
But...
Sure, that's the ideal condition.
Yeah.
But, but when you look at, you don't want to go through the effort and have to come back again.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have to do a whole new design, and that's going to take time, and of course, money.
Yeah, and that's, that, that is correct. What I'll do probably before the next meeting is I'll, I'll get a secondary option to, to speak on as well. If it, if, if the, if we're asking for a little bit too much, then we'll have a backup plan.
But make sure you have all those constraints defined.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You've got both the zoning and this, just to underscore what's been said, you have both the zoning ordinance and the, this is a land development.
Yeah.
It's defined in the code, so as you know, so you have to meet all the requirements of the subdivision and land development ordinance unless you get a waiver.
Understood.
And I believe the waivers come to us for our recommendation. We can't enact them, but we can recommend a waiver.
Thank you.
Could we break for a second?
Yeah. I had one other question.
I'm sorry, I thought...
Maybe it's a Chuck question, or does the shade tree commission weigh in on anything for large trees on the site? Because it looks like there's a couple on the perimeter. I don't know if they rely the footprint, or...
They, they do, not for a sketch plan process. When they officially submit for their land development, they will, the shade tree commission does review all of those.
Okay. So just something else as you get further in the process to be aware of.
Okay. Just would like to go off the record for a minute, if that's okay. We'll have more cars coming in, coming into park, so that is an issue that may get raised. Generally, I concur with, well, did you have more comments? I generally, the tree commission's important, of course. I concur with the comments that others have made tonight. I, I think getting more, well, first of all, you have a basketball court, so my heart is with you. And, and I've done Little League coaching, I've never been good enough in basketball to coach basketball, but I think it's great that you're doing it. Your client base now, I assume, is more in the Balla area, and this would bring you more to Haverford, and you'd seek out more students from Haverford High School and junior high?
So I have players that go to the Haverford School, I have players that go to Haverford High School here, I have players in Radnor, all over the city, all over different townships. I have players that even come from New Jersey to come train with me.
So this would be, maybe you may want to bring out that, that point, that you're, in addition to serving the surrounding townships, you'd be serving the, the youth of Haverford Township.
Yes, so I would love to get more players from this area as well, but yes, to your point...
You have a relationship with the high school or, or junior, middle school coaches?
Not on this side, more so Ballackinwood Middle School, Black Rock Middle School, Walsh Valley. I'm connected to a lot of the high schools. I played at Newman-Guretti, so Newman-Guretti, Roman Catholic. I played in college with the coach of Archbishop Ryan. So, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of high school players I'm connected to as well. I have some high school players that are ranked top 15 in the country right now that I train. They, they already have offers as freshmen and sophomores to LSU, Stanford.
The, the other thing that's been mentioned that's, I think, is very important and very valuable, and something I would, again, my heart would be with, whether I have the authority to say yes or no to it is another question. But I don't, but the, one of the goals your attorney has mentioned, the goal, it's in the, the non, non-plan, but it is a, the idea of mixed uses and having, I think, I don't know if there's a consensus in the township, but there's certainly the notion that we need more units that people, older and younger people can move into and not have to leave the township or pay a lot of money for a house. Because houses are, as you know, are very expensive. More apartments is something that's valued. Now, I just throw that out as something that may appeal to whoever has to decide these issues in the end. So for, more units is important at this moment, I think, nationally, if you're paying attention to the debates. And, and definitely locally as well. So that's a good thing. And having a place for kids to go and, and adults to go is, hone their basketball skills is great, in my opinion.
Thank you for your feedback.
It's just a tough sell because it's such a total change to that property.
And I think we all, we, we, I think collectively understood this going in, was that it's a great idea, it's a great project. It's being very creative with this lot, though, to, to put it lightly. So we, we, just so you know, we are very aware of all of that, so.
It's your dream, it's a great dream.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate all your feedback, and hopefully we will see you again fairly soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, and thanks for your preparation. Next item on the agenda is 3300 Darby Road Quadrangle Art Studio Edition. And I see you have the approval of the tree committee.
And the historical commission as well. My name's Dan Yasupovich, appearing for Kaplan Stewart. We're located at 910 Harvest Drive, Suite 200, Blue Bell, PA 19422. We represent the owner and applicant, HCP MA3 Pennsylvania LP in this application for preliminary slash final land development. The applicant is proposing to construct a one-story, 938-foot addition to the existing art studio on the Quadrangle campus located at 3300 Darby Road. We have applied for preliminary slash final land development, and we are here this evening to review these plans with you and seek your recommendation. With me today are the applicant's team members, Mimi Winkler, the project architect, Patrick Spellman, the engineer, Hans Hesslein, the landscape architect, Thomas Minner, representing the operator of this facility, and Christian Massey, representing the owner. Prior to this meeting, the applicant received those recommendations from the historical commission and the shade tree commission. As I explained earlier, Mimi Winkler will go on and describe the project, and Patrick Spellman will review the proposed site plans and review letter we received from the township engineer. So I'm going to have Mimi go ahead and walk you guys through.
Hello, I'm Mimi Winkler from Converse Winkler Architecture. Do you need my address?
Please.
Okay. 331 Montgomery Avenue, Ballackinwood, Pennsylvania. Okay. Well, we've been working with Sunrise and the Quadrangle community for the last couple of years, doing a lot of substantial interior renovations to the Commons Building. A lot of that work is almost finished, and the next phase of the project is looking at making improvements to their arts and crafts facilities. If you know anything about the community, there's an, there, there are a lot of cultural interests, and there's a robust art community there. So currently, they have the existing, this is the existing, the main entrance is up here. I don't know what other, maybe I could go to the next drawings. So this is the existing art studio that's located inside of the old garage that was part of the mansion. So it's a historic building. The other facilities or art facilities were scattered about the community. So the goal here is to unite all the arts facilities together and, and provide better facilities as well to enhance them. So we are proposing to build an addition here, it's a little smaller than the existing one, but sort of similar in shape and form. And we've worked with the historical commission along this line to sort of develop this. It'll be made out of brick with folks-laid shingles to match the existing. And it faces, this is a north facade, which is the ideal light for artists, so it'll have one large bay window there that's sort of the main design element, and it'll maximize the light for the, the north light, which is great for artists. The project includes some extensive landscaping out front at the entrance, and we have the landscape architect here to answer any questions about that, but as we said, he's already reviewed this with the shade tree commission. And then I guess we have our civil engineer to answer more detailed technical questions. I guess I couldn't, did I... Yes, so this, this, these are the elevations of the building. This is the existing studios with the steep roof, and these are the new ones over here.
But this is going to be no higher than the existing...
It will be lower than the existing. It's about 25 feet at the highest point. It's a one-story structure. It'll have a high space in the center where we get that great north light and work areas on the other side.
And that high space in the center is...
Is there, yeah. And, you know, it's, it, there's just a little connection. If I go back, actually, one of the questions was, how do you enter the building? You enter the building through the existing art studio and this existing courtyard. There's a small link. There's a door here, but that's really just an exit door and into the studio.
What's going to happen to the existing studio space?
That stays an existing studio. We're, we're doing some improvements to that and adding a bathroom, handicapped bathroom, but it, it stays.
Here's the landscape plans, and here is the overall...
Here's the landscape plans and here is the overall campus. So as they pointed out, we do have Historical Commission approval, Shade Tree Commission. We did get zoning approval, excuse me, sewer approval, an exemption from the DEP. For sewer, there is no real sewer facilities or uses being added for this. We have a review letter from the township engineer, which is, essentially will comply. There's one or two comments that we may want to discuss, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Do you want me to go down this letter point by point or just hit the highlights that I think we want to talk about?
Point by point is usually best. So yeah, point by point, please.
Sure. Comment number one is to add a zoning table. We have a zoning table up here, but you notice it's an older one for 1A. So that's going to be converted to residence District 1. The zoning will comply with R1 zoning. So there's no real issues there. Comment number two talks about needing, needing the location names, whiffs of streets, curbs, pavement, all property lines, that's the one we're going to talk about, within 200 feet of the site. So this was intended to do that. It did provide all the names of the properties. We don't have, I can't find a good GIS data source. Maybe you folks know one of the parcel lines in Delaware County? Any, know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, Delaware County GIS Department has that.
Has that? All right, so I can, so it would actually be a partial waiver that there will be GIS available data, not necessarily survey data for this. And I would put it on to this plan with the names and whatever whiffs we can work out. I found a better aerial, so it's much clearer than this one and it will certainly meet the intent. So I guess we're still asked basically for a partial waiver of 164E5E3 to show what I can, what I can get off of public GIS data. Number three, Shade Tree Commission, we talked about. Number four, it notes that we're pretty close to the 1,000 square foot threshold that would trigger stormwater. The applicant is aware and will stay under the 1,000. That will be further documented in the grading permit application. Clarify how the, oh wait, number five is clarify whether it's open to the public. It is not open to the public. It is for the residents, with the caveat that they do have open house events for prospective residents. So technically, I guess, that means it would be open to the public on those days. So I think it's really just to see what it looks like. Nobody's going to be standing there painting. Number six, access to the building should be clearly identified on the plan. So we'll put a note on here, but as Mimi pointed out, the access is through the existing art, art studio. The door that is there is really just an egress door for emergencies. Location on the overall, of the addition on the overall plan, I will add it to this plan. Kind of shown on this one, but again, it's not a great aerial, so we'll add that to this one. Limited disturbance is tight. It's tight on purpose. We're trying to save these trees. And we'll further flush that out with the grading permit. The contractor who would do the work has been involved with this. He thinks he can work with this and save those trees. If it turns out something comes up that we can't, again, we'll address it with the grading permit application. Also note that this is 3,000 square feet disturbance, so we're not going to get near the 5,000 square feet trigger. If we had a whole, this whole area up to the road was part of it, that'd just be another 1,000 square feet. What was the number eight? Number nine, change East Town to Haverford Township on the signature blocks. We will do that. My apologies. And then number 10 is get a grading permit, which we certainly will do.
I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you give us your name and title and address when you started?
I did not.
Please.
The, Patrick Spellman, with Site Engineering Concepts. We're located at 622 Nikestra Avenue in Berwyn. So in summary, basically, our five waivers request would become six waivers, with one of them being a partial waiver of the 200-foot buffer information. And that's all I can think of to say.
One clarification maybe for Chuck. The comment two, the names, locations, width of streets, you know, 200 feet of the site, it's like a 77-acre site. Do you need all 72 properties around the perimeter of the site? Or is site-like area of disturbance of this 900-square-foot building?
We realize it's extensive. You probably can just restrict it to the immediate area of where you're working.
Okay.
Have you supplied a waiver request letter?
Yes.
Okay.
And we signed, and the waiver request form was signed and submitted with the application.
Do we get a copy of that?
No problem. Got it under control. That's it, yep, that's it. We got copies all over the place.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you do have to leave the main facility to get into the art studio. You walk across a courtyard here and that's the way it's always been.
You're leaving wherever you are. You're going outside and you're entering the space and then you're going into the old art studio.
Yes.
And you cross the old art studio, but you don't go outside to get into the-
Right.
-proposed art studio.
The fastest way from, this is the Commons area, you'll come through this way and in. And then you're all inside once you're there. This is outside. It's an outside courtyard that's existing. And there's a covered walkway thing here. I guess, does that show? Not a walkway. Yeah, this is the main entrance, so you can also, this is covered. Yes, it's a dash outside to get there. Well, actually, we're adding that, we're adding that toilet room into the art studio. Just one. There's none now, so people would have to go outside and back into the other building and so this will be a convenience. It'll be a one, single unisex.
Are there any steps or ramps between the old art studio and the proposed-
No, it's all engraed, flush.
Are there any questions? Copy dance or any additional? But we just ask that you recommend this for everyone.
Any further discussion from anyone here tonight? I assume you're all here in support. Any comments for the board or do you want a minute to look that over?
I just wanted to ask real fast. So we're looking at waiver number three, Section 160-4. E5G, Partial Waiver of Land Development Plan Submission Requirements, excepting ENS and planting-related requirements. So just bear with me because I just, I'm curious what else that would involve. Do you have a list of what that is or do I need to quick look up the code?
It's shit in here someplace. So about halfway down, the following features are not proposed as part of the project, nor will they be altered by this land development plan. And that would be streets, alleys, lots, parking, loading, fire zones, surface drainage patterns, stormwater controls, street profiles and cross-sections, lot use, egress, intersections, site distance, open space, and dedication of lands. So there are the remainder of the stuff listed in that section that were not affected by this project.
Does it look like the, is it like drain from north to south generally or northeast to southwest? So it's not like shooting off the Darby Road, any extra?
Correct. So let me get to my plan here. So we are draining, so basically it's draining across this way down into here. This is the stormwater culvert that takes it out of the loading dock area and off to the rest of the property.
Gotcha.
In your updated zoning table, I'm just looking, so the SADO section here requires, the plan showed the open space requirements for all SADOs. Obviously, this is all pre-existing. It's, I mean, it's such a minor area, but, I mean, are we at all impacting the regulated area of required open space? As that would have been required under the original? And is that in your updated, is that or will that be in your updated zoning table?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I understand. I understand the question.
I don't really have any objections at all to this. It seems very minor and certainly an asset to the residents. Everyone loves a good art, art session. I also don't have any objections to any of the waivers that they're requesting here as in their letter dated August 29, 2024.
I agree. I concur.
Okay.
Just one question on the trees. They're not going to block the light from the new landscaping. Is that going to block the light south? I mean, to the north, rather? It's just a-
They're not intended to.
Got that or, whoops.
No, we have a ring of shrubs planted out in front of that to sort of provide some formal landscaping that respects the building but also maintains light.
Essentially, it's for the residents who are already there and are using, or might move in and are using the facility now as a studio and you want to expand that space.
Yeah.
And light. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary final land development plan of the Quadrangle property subject, and all of the waivers as requested in the August 29, 2024 letters, subject to revisions of the plan set to include the GIS imagery showing the boundary lines and owner information and the updated zoning table.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you changing the library at all? Are you keeping the library as is? Not related to this?
Oh, it's being improved. It's better lighting, better sheltering, better views.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Yes, it is. Last item on the agenda is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments.
I provided, I provided two versions of the Word document. The red lines showing everything incorporated from the Planning Commission's comments on September 12. And then I did have a meeting with a couple of members of the Ordinance Committee from the Board of Commissioners and I, so I accepted all of the Planning Commission comments and revisions from the 12th and then showed in the second Word document their few additions. So I just, I think if anything, we could run through that, that Word document and you can let me know if you have any comments or any other questions. Let me know if you want something else.
I have just one quick one-
Sure.
-before we get in. There was that one sort of grammatical change to the first definition of abandonment.
Okay.
I think we still need to delete, this is very minor and not substantive at all. It's deleting the word on the first line, "which."
Sure. Okay. The two major kind of outcomes from the meeting with the, with the Ordinance Committee members was the addition to put back in the other accessory structures in 182711 and that's going to be at the very bottom of that section. So it's D, other accessory structures, where we state accessory structures not otherwise regulated may be located, erected, or maintained in such a manner that they do not encroach upon any required setbacks of the district in which they are located, provided such accessory structures may not be located, erected, or maintained in front of the primary or principal structure on the lot.
I'm sorry, Jamie. I don't have, I'm not able to get my computer going, so I don't know exactly where you are. I have the draft. Yep. Other accessories.
So we had-
Or are you in? I don't know. This one and this one.
This is dated 9/16/24. Yeah. Yeah, page four. So this was something that the Planning Commission took out in August? Not even in September?
Okay. I'm sorry.
I don't have a printed copy. I apologize.
Is this putting something back in that we took out or is it?
Yeah, so the, this is something that was in the very original proposed ordinance and the Planning Commission decided to take it out and the Board of Commissioners members requested that we put it back in. So what this does is effectively says that if you want to put an accessory structure somewhere on your property, it can't be in your front yard. And then the other major change, which we've removed, structure- from, I guess it's, if we go to page five, you're at C2. We removed non-conforming structure from this clause. So the voluntary demolition raising or removal of a structure that's, of a non-conforming structure, meaning you have an existing non-conforming shed that doesn't meet our required setback. They felt that the voluntary, like to replace that shed in kind should be permitted. So this is, I think, a conversation that, you know, I think the whole board will have to have and weigh in on.
So this says if you tear down a shed, for example, you can rebuild the shed as is?
If your shed is 25 years old and it's been there for 25 years, here's the, here was the theory. The shed or the fence has been there for 25 years and you're ready to just replace it in kind, then they should be permitted to do so. It's as an accessory structure, not an accessory building or anything, but the structure itself. That was the feeling.
So if it's a non-conforming shed?
Yes.
And they want to just take it down and... But a non-conforming shed, as long as it conforms to the existing footprint?
To the existing footprint.
It's not an abandon, it shall not be deemed an abandon.
That's what they're saying, yeah.
I don't agree with that.
Okay. Those are the, those are the two main additions from that.
Jamie and I were just discussing beforehand, but going up to page four for other accessory structures, I just want to point a clarification so that we all understand kind of what the implications of this. So when it says that a structure, as an accessory structure, may not be located, erected, and maintained in front of the primary or principal structure on the lot, many homes do sit right at the edge of the front yard setback. So there is a difference between front yard setback and then front yard. So a front yard is pretty much anything in front of the facade of the house versus a front yard setback, which could be further away from the actual house, depending on how far the house is setback from the edge of that front yard setback. So I was kind of going back and forth on this because for those irregularly shaped lots, or in the case of my next-door neighbor, the house is literally set like five feet off of the back property line. So the entire house is sitting in the rear like third of the lot, and the front two-thirds of the lot is just yard. So instead of the house being kind of centered and having a front yard and a backyard, they have no backyard and just front yard. So they wouldn't have the opportunity to put a shed in their front yard, even though the front of their house is further back than the back of my house. So in that case, this can kind of get a little wonky. But I think ultimately, those shaped lots maybe are few and far between, and unfortunately, they would need to come before the zoning hearing board. If this provision stays in, lots like that would need to come before the zoning hearing board. So it's a matter of, are we doing more harm by including it versus excluding it? By including it?
The intention of the current zoning ordinance concerning accessory structures, I've been informed has always by policy been that these kinds of things are not to be permitted in the front yard. And that's why the inclusion of this clause was added to begin with, was just to, you know, rather set that in regulation as opposed to just policy. You know, that's why it's there, so.
And I can certainly see the point of it. So I think on the whole, it's better that we do restrict things within the front yard area. So I would support leaving it in. Because I missed the discussion in September, so I wasn't here for the recommendation to remove it, but... I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that one. But then for the other one, this one, I think, I mean, I thought the whole point of non-conforming uses was to eliminate their use when they're no longer used. So if you have a shed or something else that's falling to pieces because it's 25, 30 years old and it falls apart, I don't think that, I don't think that you should be able to just put it up by right in the same spot. I think that you need to, if you're going to replace it, it needs to come into conformance. Because the idea is that these things will find, they'll sunset, and anything that comes in after that will now be in conformance to the codes and proper setbacks.
I agree, in principle. Question is whether it's still being used as a non-conforming, whether it's a non-conforming use that's still in use. Whatever, you've got your tools there and you just want to put up a new frame. As opposed to, what I think you're saying is it's really been abandoned. It's no longer really been in use for a long time. You've let it fall apart.
No.
If you're going to rebuild, you ought to conform setbacks, which I agree with.
No, the abandonment is not that it's not being used, but under the definition of abandonment, it's a voluntary removal, right?
Yeah, it's in the event that it's voluntary. So in the instance that a fence that is non-conforming and perhaps not even adequately placed on your property may be ready for replacement. It's the idea that that fence was there, you know, the next property owner comes along, purchases the property, has no knowledge that their, that fence is not conforming, and they should be permitted to, you know, replace their fencing kind in place, rather than have to move it, you know, five feet, you know, further into the backyard or something like that. That was the feeling, that they should not have, they should be grandfathered in for the placement of a structure like that.
I'm also getting rid of non-conforming uses or anything that's non-conforming. I just want to be sure. Are we talking about abandoned versus not abandoned?
No, we're talking about buildings versus buildings and structures. So the way, the way the code is written is that it would be the voluntary demolition raising or removal of a non-conforming building or structure.
So to answer your question, David, it's not something that's been abandoned. It's when you voluntarily are repairing or replacing that, that non-conformity. And it's only, and they only removed structure so that this doesn't, is not applicable to structures. It would still be applicable to buildings, any non-conforming building that is voluntarily demolished.
Getting rid of them.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to change it, or do you want to...
No, it sounds like the committee wanted to remove or structure. Is that...
Yes.
Okay, so the committee wanted to remove or structure. But I, my personal take on it is that it should remain because I think we're trying to eliminate non-conforming uses at all. So if you have a fence and it's encroaching into someone else's property, or it is within an area of an easement that it shouldn't be, and it's falling down and ready for replacement, if somebody removes it, I don't think that they should have the right to be able to put it up in that same spot.
So if you're going to tear down your fence and fix it?
If you're going to fix it and move it anyway, then you might as well make it conforming.
I agree with that.
My, so the board wanted to remove it, but I think, it sounds like everyone, Steve, agree?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I think, Jamie, our recommendation then is to include building or structure.
Correct.
Yes, for that one.
Yeah. Okay.
So the committee can...
Yep.
And then, are we... Are we good otherwise with the zoning?
There's one thing I had mentioned before, that, two things I'd mentioned before. One is the, just being sure that when we make our recommendation, we're recommending, without exception, we're recommending, from our point of view, the changes are acceptable, but only as to the changes. And we don't want our approval to be deemed approval of anything that's simply a restatement of existing provisions. I raise this because the code, it's anticipated once we have a comprehensive plan and review zoning, we might make a lot of changes to, township may make a lot of changes to zoning. And we're not trying to imply now that everything that's in this existing draft is something we're approving. And I think the draft includes sections that are simply restatements of what's already in the existing.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying, that we're approving changes, not...
Understood.
That exists.
Yep.
That can be conveyed.
Yes.
There was also, does anybody else have comments while I'm looking for my spot?
I didn't, no. I support the proposed changes with the caveat to leave in.
Right. Yep.
802B1, non-conforming uses. I think the first sentence stays as is. Can't expand a non-conforming use unless you... A non-conforming use of a building or a structure can't be enlarged unless made to conform to all the regulations of the district in which the non-conforming use is located. When you get into the non-conforming use of a lot or land, maybe extended or enlarged, provided that, is authorized by special, is authorized by special exception of the zoning hearing board. I thought on that one, we had, thought we had said that one would put back in after review and approval of the planning. Because on that, we do have our engineer, and the zoning hearing board does not have.
I don't have any notes where we've added the planning commission back in.
Thought we had discussed it. 182A2B1, conforming uses. There were a couple of other places where it got taken out, but...
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any notes where we were adding that back in.
Good. Can you refresh us as to why it was taken here?
I think it was seen as, currently, that's not how things operate, right? They go, if they're... I think currently, that was seen as like, this is not something that's a functioning regulation, right? And there's no policy that supported that really realistically in the internal structure of how everything is done here. So, you know, talking with John Walco, we didn't see the necessity for it.
Refresh my memory as to what, some of that discussion. I think the discussion went, well, we don't do it now, so why should we leave it in? And my response was, I recalled, yes, having reviewed and approved, I don't know that exact provision, but similar provisions. But it's not as if we ignore the requirement. Have ignored in the past the requirement that there be a review and approval by the planning commission. And if we have ignored it, I don't think we should keep ignoring it. We should do what we're supposed to do. Especially when it comes to the real change.
This is just for extension of a non-conforming use. This isn't aging up use. I don't, to the, to the point that there should be a separation of church and state when it comes to planning commission giving recommendations to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board should be reviewing applications free and clear of all prejudice or swaying of opinions. So by having the planning commission weigh in on applications, I feel like that could muddy the waters with the zoning hearing board. And if an applicant needs engineering reviews, there's nothing to say that in the special exception process, they couldn't, they couldn't seek engineering reviews. And there's also nothing that would stop the commissioners from, you know, taking party to any proceedings before the zoning hearing board. The township always has the right to do so. So if anybody has any objectionable complaints at the township commissioners level, then they could make it known through their solicitor. They could serve as a party to the proceedings. I don't know that that's ever been done, but I think that there is opportunities if you're concerned about like having the township engineer weigh in on things, there's an opportunity to do so for anything that might rise to that level if the application would warrant it.
That were, well, that's a lot of assumptions in what you're saying, and I don't think experience has borne those out. I don't know why an applicant would undertake studies and expenses for engineering when they're not required. I don't see the zoning hearing board having the knowledge or expertise on their own, or for them to require further engineering studies when they're not required. The municipality planning code has many places where the planning commission does review and approve special exceptions and other things. I think even conditional uses. And the township has demonstrated reluctance to appear. I understand they have an absolute right to be a party to any matter before the zoning hearing board, but that is not a right they have often chosen to. So again, I'd say we should put that back in because it's something that could be quite fundamental to the neighbors, to the township, to the planning of the township. I think that's something that could go back in. It's important to have, particularly the thoughts of the planning commission, and secondarily, and primarily, the engineering expertise. There just is no engineering review, and you're talking about land and changes in the use of the land.
How would we get an engineering review? Because we don't have, if the applicant wouldn't voluntarily provide an engineering review, a review by the planning commission of a special exception application also wouldn't garner the legal requirement to trigger an engineering review.
We could ask, we could ask our engineer to please take a look at it.
Well, then who's going to...
Like do on other things.
Who's going to pay for that?
Whoever pays for it now.
Well, if we commission our own engineering review, the applicant isn't obliged, I mean, under the land development process and under... So under the land development process, they provide escrow to the township, which covers all engineering review services. But under a special exception, unless the ordinance would, unless the ordinance requires something like a traffic study or something else that would go along with it, I mean, certainly if they trigger stormwater management, they would have to provide some sort of stormwater management, which that application process probably comes with escrow and goes to you for review, right? So there's triggers where that gets, that escrow, that financial component to it gets, that gets triggered. But under a special exception application, if the planning commission were to review it, we don't have the authority to authorize or require unless the ordinance says specifically that, like as part of a special exception application, you must provide a traffic impact assessment, a water and sanitary sewer assessment. Like, we could, we can make that a requirement, but that doesn't currently exist. I don't think there's an appetite to add that. But there's no, there's no way that we could undertake some sort of engineering review without it being required. But the planning commission, or I'm sorry, the zoning hearing board could theoretically ask for it because the conditions of special exception require that the applicant provide information in support of the list of... information in support of the list of conditions for special exceptions, which include that the proposal will not substantially detract from the use of neighboring property or from the character of the neighborhood, that it'll serve the best interests of the township, that it's a logical and efficient, this is in the zoning code. These are all the things. So as part of a special exception application, it's incumbent upon the applicant to provide evidence that they meet the qualifications of a special exception. So it does, it does talk here, the suitability with respect to probable effects upon highway traffic. So there are things within the special exception application that the zoning hearing board could reasonably request some sort of more robust documentation. And if they don't feel like they've met that burden of evidence, they could continue the hearing until such time as they can provide that information, or they can deny the application. So I think it's covered.
Well, your fundamental point was having review by a plan, this group, the planning commission, would be interference with the orderly processes of the zoning hearing board.
Yes.
I disagree.
Okay.
I think having the additional input of the planning commission is why we're here. And if we have thoughts on it, we can make recommendations to the zoning hearing board. We can review. We're talking about a nonconforming use of land. Nonconforming.
The enlargement or expansion.
No, yes, we're talking about a nonconforming use of a lot or land, maybe extended or enlarged, when authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board. To me, that could be a very fundamental problem, as in terms of the comprehensive plan, in terms of what the goals of our township are, in terms of the neighbors. It just seems like the zoning hearing board could only benefit from the additional input of the planning commission. That's why we have a planning commission. I leave it in for this one. There are others where it's out, and I don't think it's that critical. This one seems, would concern me that this just goes to the zoning hearing board and. As I mentioned before, potential for mischief. I don't see how it hurts to have us do our job and review things and give our thoughts on it, which would also give us a chance to have comments to the township commissioners.
So my last point is just that the MPC doesn't require that. I do feel like it's not the job of the planning commission to provide feedback to the zoning hearing board just because I don't believe that it's our place to interfere with their decision-making process. But that doesn't, I mean, we do get all of the zoning hearing board notices. We get emails about every single zoning hearing board that comes before the board. So I think that if there's anything that's critical that would come up, I think it's then, you know, our responsibility to attend just as a resident. And in our role as, as resident and as members of the planning commission, we're all open to make public comment. But I don't, I don't believe that it's our duty as the planning commission to review applications to make a comment, to then share with the board as the planning commission. I think that if we as planning commission members want to make public comment, we have the right to do so within the zoning hearing board.
As you pointed out, it's public comment. Public comment, as you know, is distinguished from party status.
Correct.
And as members of the planning commission coming in as individuals, we have zero authority. We are only individuals in the community. We presumably, if we live in that area, we might be allowed to make public comment, but we would most surely be denied party status by this zoning hearing board.
No one has rejected public comment, but yes, party status would be dependent upon your particular residence.
And whether you're affected or not.
Correct.
If you would, I really didn't want to get into the issue of party status because it's extremely concerning to me how the zoning hearing board handles party status. I would just encourage you and every member of this board to please observe the last zoning hearing board meeting. I might as well say it. There was an appeal from a decision of the zoning hearing board, our zoning hearing board. They denied party status to certain people in the community. On appeal, the court of common pleas directed the zoning, I should have the order in front of me, but the, my recollection is the court of common pleas of Delaware County directed the zoning hearing board to grant party status to the, to the appellants. Zoning hearing board, aware of that, proceeded to deny party status to those appellants. Who they deemed were not. Whatever. Concerned, that's a big concern. I hope everybody on this board is very concerned. But we're going way beyond this immediate issue.
I was gonna say, that's not relevant.
Well, you said, but you said that the issue, they, we can always go and we can be heard. They, not only are we not to expand on that party issue, the, if we go to make public comment, we will not be, generally, public, I've not known our, some zoning hearing boards will swear in members of the public or treat them as giving evidence. Generally, if you're not sworn in and you're just giving public comment, that is not a basis for the zone. Generally not evidence which the zoning hearing board can base its decision. They're entitled to hear it, they're entitled to take it into account like any other opinion, but it's not evidence. So to say, we can just go as individuals, which as far as I know, never happens, doesn't have the same effect as the planning commission, obviously. I don't know, it's always been in there, and now it's being taken out. And there are places in the.
I think in the.
There are places in the, in the municipality's planning code where it's in, and maybe it's not required in every instance, but there's no reason why we should take it out, in my opinion.
I mean, I.
They benefit from having our.
That this actually gets, you know. Executed, the, I mean, the way that I read it, a nonconforming use of a lot or land may be extended or enlarged. When that's happening, and it's a nonresidential structure or nonresidential use, that's gonna, that's gonna kick in your subdivision and land development ordinance. And then that, that involves the planning commission. In the instance that this is a residential use that's nonconforming on a lot, I mean, is that something that the planning commission needs to weigh in on? That they wanna?
Am I sure I follow?
Yeah, I just think that, I think that, you know, in the instance that this actually is affected, like, you're, you're kind of, kind of already covered in your subdivision and land development ordinance for the, for those nonresidential uses. It's the, it's the residential uses that are nonconforming, are nonconforming use of a lot, right? That's got a lot that's nonconforming that then they want to extend or enlarge, and they, you know, are gonna go to the zoning hearing board for their special exception. I don't feel that the planning commission is going to need to be looking at those case by case. And I think that that's where John Walco and I were like, this is maybe already covered elsewhere in other ordinances for those instances that the planning commission should be weighing in. And otherwise, for the little residential guy, you know, we can remove it here.
Help me out here.
Sure.
And not, it says, "Nonconforming use of a building or structure shall not be extended, enlarged, or added to in any manner unless said use is made to conform to all the regulations of the district in which the nonconforming use is located." That's fine. And I think that's the way it's already existing.
That's fine. Yep, that's existing.
And then it goes on though to say, "However, a nonconforming use, use of a lot or land may be extended or enlarged." What is a nonconforming use of a lot or land?
So that's when you're like.
It's not a building, it's a nonconforming use. So somebody's doing something or using a property in a way that's nonconforming.
Of the lot, right? So isn't that where you're?
Without a building or a structure. If it's a building or a structure, they can't do anything.
Well, if it's, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, if it's a nonconforming use, say it's an existing building, they're not increasing the footprint of the building, but say they operate, I don't know, a home business on the first floor, and that is a nonconforming home business, and they decide to expand that home business into the second floor of the building.
I don't think this, I don't think that's what this is about, unless I'm misreading it.
A nonconforming.
It's not entirely clear, but.
A nonconforming use of a building or structure. However, a nonconforming use.
Unless said use is made to conform to all the regulations of the district in which it's located. So that's what that says. There's another provision, isn't there, about percentage increase? Anyway.
Yeah, 25%.
However, a nonconforming use, go ahead.
A nonconforming use of a lot or land.
Not buildings or structures.
May be extended or enlarged.
This is not somebody running a flower shop, and they want to have a second floor of the flower shop.
So a nonconforming use of lot or land.
And that's why I'm asking, what does that mean?
So a nonconforming use of the lot.
What's a nonconforming use of a lot?
Would that just be use of the lot, whether it's within a building or the building?
That's why I find it very ambiguous in the first place, but. Like, it's not clear, I don't, I don't know.
Nonconforming use of a lot.
I think it's within a building or without a building. So apart, like.
But then a nonconforming use of a building.
Well, a nonconforming, a nonconforming use of lot or land may be extended. So if the building, say the building is conforming, but the use inside the building is not conforming, and they want to expand the building, even if the building meets all of the applicable setbacks, the use within the building is being expanded. So it's the, the expansion of the lot. So I don't know, I see, I read it as the lot is kind of more of an umbrella term for like any expansion of a nonconforming use or structure. Would it, I mean, would it make it easier to understand if it just said a nonconforming use of a building or structure or a lot or land?
It would make it a lot worse, or dangerous, for the whole policy of not expanding nonconforming uses and not letting them, making things worse. I don't know. That's why I say it's not, it's not clear, because I'm talking about uses. It's not talking about area or dimensions, it's talking about uses. That's why I'm focusing on that. And it's not talking about something, I assume, again, it's pretty ambiguous, as we're demonstrating. But a noncon, if we can come up with these just reading it, lawyers can come up with all kinds of things. Nonconforming use of a building or structure shall not be extended and large. So that's a use in a building or a structure. That's a use of a building or structure. The use of a lot seems to me, I don't know, selling lemonade on the lot. I don't know what that would be. If you could give me an example, that might help instead of the abstractions.
There's a car wash on Haverford Road that is triple zoned. There are three zoning districts on that lot. And none of them permit a car wash to be there.
Okay.
Okay. If that car wash wants to come in and they want to put a canopy on, they're expanding their use, correct?
Oh, no, they're expanding their building.
A canopy would be a structure, not a building.
Or a structure. I just mean, the first sentence would cover that. Nonconforming use of a building or a structure shall not be extended or enlarged, unless the whole thing complies with all the other regulations of this.
But is this so, nonconforming use of a lot? So if, if that area, okay, so if they wanted to put up a canopy in the parking lot in order to.
That's not the question.
No, 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 hold on, hold on.
If they want to put on a canopy over the.
Hold on, let me work through, please let me.
I'd love you to.
Work through my example here. So if we're, if we're putting a canopy on an area of the parking lot that wasn't used for car wash purposes previously, was just used as a parking, say, the employees parked there, and they wanted to shift the employee parking to a different part of the parking lot, and take over that area of the parking lot to put up a canopy to increase their car washing operation floor area, then that would be an expansion of that use on the lot.
Car wash.
The, the car wash use is being expanded on the lot because they're taking over a portion of the lot that wasn't previously used as a car wash for the purposes of the car wash.
Yeah. And this says they can't do that. The first sentence, I believe, covers that.
It, it says, "Unless said use is made to conform to all regulations of the district in which the nonconforming use is located."
Because it's a car wash.
Because a car wash isn't permitted at all. So because no expansion of that car wash use is actually a legally permitted expansion, because it can't conform to the regulations, then they would be required to come in for a special exception.
No, they can't do it at all, because they can't do it. This says they can't do it, and it doesn't provide for a special exception. The first sentence is fine, in my view. It says, you can't expand your car wash. Period. Unless you conform, make your whole lot conforming, which if you can't do it, you can't do it. It doesn't provide for a special exception to expand the use of that structure or building.
But ultimately, zoning has to give people a way to request relief. You can't just.
That's a whole other question.
You can't just say, no, if you can't meet the regulations of the district, then you're out of luck.
You have a constitutional right under the doctrine of natural expansion of a nonconforming use to expand that nonconforming use. That's your right. The code can limit that right, but if you think that's overly restricted, then we have to change the first sentence. But you're, you're mixed, I think you're mixing things in or complicating something. I understand that the law, the constitutional law in Pennsylvania, but I understand Pennsylvania does not permit or protects the right of a person with a nonconforming use to expand that under that doctrine of natural, natural expansion. I have a flower shop, the flower shop use has been growing, have more customers, and I need to have a little more space for them. That's, I think they have a constitutional right to do that. I'm not expressing a legal opinion, I'm just saying I think that's generally true. So I'm not disagreeing with you, but when you try to write in all kinds of benefits to the landowner to expand and give the zoning hearing board the right to do that, that needs to be thought through as part of any comprehensive zoning law. I don't think we should do it tonight.
Okay.
And I think what we have demonstrated is this is very ambiguous, and maybe that's provision needs revision.
I don't know, I think the car wash example made it a little bit more clear in my mind. But you and I have been, I, I think we all know where you and I stand. I'm curious of the other.
And maybe we can.
Because here's, here's the thing, this is a democracy here, and we have a quorum.
No, I'm, I'm open to anybody jumping in.
I can see under special exception.
Okay.
What's it?
So.
What do you, what should be reconsidered?
If they want to make an addition to the car wash, it's going into another zoning district.
I don't think that's the law, but that's not what we're discussing. We're discussing whether the planning commission, the only immediate issue, I, I think this provision needs to be looked at again and maybe revised, because this whole discussion has made me convinced that it's a very ambiguous provision, because we don't even agree on what it says.
All right, hold on, but.
And we're both thinking, and we're both being reasonable and in good faith, trying to figure this thing out.
This is not being modified. This is existing language, correct?
The first sentence.
Is, is any part of that 802B1 modified from existing?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we removed the planning commission.
Okay.
And all my, my only point tonight is, these changes, as I think this discussion has demonstrated, is changes in use of land is significant enough that the planning commission should weigh in. And I don't think that's an interference with our zoning hearing board. I think that's a good thing. I think that's a good thing and this body should have, that's what we exist for, planning. We're the planning commission and I think a change in the use of property could be use of land or.
It's not change of use, it's expansion of use.
However, a nonconforming, extended or enlarged. I think an extension or enlargement of a use of land uh, should have the input of the, of the planning commission at a minimum.
Okay. I believe.
And that's all I'm saying tonight.
I think that, I think it's fine with the removal of the planning commission because I don't think that the planning commission needs to get involved in every single decision before the zoning hearing board.
We're not talking about every single decision, excuse me, we're not talking about every single decision before. Sophistry, Maggie, you know that sophistry. We are not ask, I'm not suggesting we get involved in every decision. I have said there were several places where Jamie and, and John thought we should take out the planning commission. Didn't object to those places. I do object to that when we're talking about a nonconforming use and giving the authority to the planning commission without, to the zoning hearing board without even a peep out of the planning commission. And all I'm saying is if they're going to ask someone, ask for a special exception and I think, I think now I'm convinced the whole thing is on, Jamie. Jamie. This discussion is convincing me that the whole second sentence is really hard to understand because I think we've talked about it in a way that is showing, demonstrating there's a lot of ambiguity in that provision. And I'd ask that you and John have another look at it.
Okay, you're, you're one member of the planning commission, I need to hear from everybody else before I'm, I'm going to do that.
I've just given you my comment.
We definitely had this at a place where everybody, like Angelo was absolutely ready for this to go. Um, I haven't gotten a lot of other indication from the planning commission that, that the zoning, you know, amendments need to be fully looked at all over again. So I'd like to hear from everybody else that that's what we want.
But I'd like them to comment on that specific provision of whether the planning commission should.
And, and I want to hear a consensus from everybody that that's what you guys want me to do then.
Some reason I think that we get involved. Happening on that parcel at least somehow. But Jamie, if there's a nonconforming.
Well, to, to Jamie's point earlier, yeah, so to Jamie's point earlier, so this provision, so and again, apologies because I missed the September, so I didn't realize that that was the provision that had been taken out. I thought we were just talking about adding it in, so, okay. The, if, if there were a case where an applicant came before the zoning hearing board to expand a nonconforming use, that expansion would likely come forward through SALDO and that is where we would have the opportunity to weigh in on it. They may or may not have already gone before the zoning hearing board to get said special exception, but then it would still come before planning commission for, for SALDO. But that, so that is, that is where we could get involved in it, but.
All right, I need to comment on that. There is presently pending before, there are been many cases where a change, it does not involve a SALDO when somebody wants to, when the owner wants to change the use of property without changing the footprint of the building that, that has gone before the zoning hearing board. It doesn't ever get to this planning commission. I think it should, but it doesn't. So it doesn't always involve a SALDO. It's not always a land develop, a change in use does not necessarily mean a land development and therefore does not come before this body under the SALDO. But we will not get any chance to. Especially if the change in use of land doesn't involve a building, a new building or structure, but it's just a change in use of land.
Yeah, that's true.
Then it's never going to get here, it's not a SALDO. So that's not relevant to this discussion. If you want to have some input.
It's not that it's not relevant.
If we want to have some input into, any input into these kinds of proposals, have it in the code and as it was there before, I don't think it should be taken out. I did raise that last time, I thought there was agreement on that, but maybe I'm mistaken. Yes, I am mistaken and I would ask that it be put back in. If you, and we can decide on a case by case basis, we may say, well, we don't care if somebody wants to have a lemonade stand and expand that, that's fine. We, it's not that important. We have discretion to not say, to say, fine, it's, we approve it like we always do, like we often do. That's all. I don't think it's like that big a deal and I really don't think, I am in favor of us reviewing and I don't see that as an interference with the orderly procedures of the zoning hearing board. I mean, there are such.
I have no further comment.
Would you, would you like us to?
Does someone want to make a motion?
My motion is to re, put back in the language about review by the, whatever it was before, to put back in the language for review by the planning commission. That's all for tonight, I'm not interested in.
Are you recommending, are you recommending approval of the ordinance changes with the revision to reincorporate the planning commission review in this section?
Yes, and also to comment to add that we're not approving the whole existing, we're not approving any restatement of the existing code, we're approving the changes. So yes, I'm in favor of approving all the changes with one insert.
What about the the, the str- the other one, the, the one that the board, which, which is the one that we're actually looking at, the board revision one?
You, you wanted to keep or, you wanted to keep or structure in 182-802 C2.
And I agree with you.
Okay.
We agree on something.
So the motion, I don't want to step on your toes, David, do you want to restate your motion in full?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I, my motion is to approve the change, the proposed changes only and including the addition, you can phrase this better, including the request from the planning commission that structure be included in the appropriate place.
What was that code section again?
C2.
Yeah, let me, let me try to sum this up for you guys. So you want to make the motion.
We need, excuse me, Jamie, do we need a part of the motion to be my little change, deletion of the word which?
No.
That's just cosmetic.
Yeah. You're, you're going to recommend to the board the changes with the subject to the, to the following changes. Keeping or structure in 182-802 C2 in addition to re- retaining in 182-802 B1, the language following review and recommendation by the planning commission.
And that it be clear that we are approving. This motion is limited to the proposed changes. It is not to be deemed a approval of restatement of existing provisions. And again, I only say that so that we are, we are happy with the changes as, plus the suggestions. We're not, as I said earlier, the goal in the township is to revise the comprehensive plan eventually and start on a revision of the zoning code. Don't want to imply that the planning commission or the commissioners have approved everything that's in the zoning ordinance. We're approving the changes.
Again.
Favor? Aye.
Nay, only on the caveat of the planning commission review for zoning hearing board.
Which decision?
Don't agree with what's happening.
What's your disagreement?
Either decision's a aid. You're going to present it to me. Who are you going to present it to?
A- after you guys either.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you, do you vote?
Yeah, I, not totally my area. A little convoluted feeling. So I'll, I'll abstain from it.
Before we, before we finalize the vote, I just want to restate, we're not reviewing and revising the whole thing. The only change in what is drafted is to restore what was originally in there about review by the planning commission. That's it. Could you read it, it would, as it would be changed, please?
It's essentially just this with the, provided the review. What, what questions do you have? Can we help you understand this better?
I know we went back and forth on a lot of issues.
David and I kind of get into an intellectual debate here, which is unhelpful for everybody else, so thank you for dealing with our.
Yes, thank you.
Legal bickerings. Is there, what is?
So if it's a nonconforming use or something. It seems like it's an extra stab if you were property owner.
Well, it was always in there. And they take, now they're proposing taking it out. I'm saying leave it in, it's good to have, because it isn't just zoning. It's a change in use of land. They're not going to do a variance. Well, I don't want to get into the legal arguments. To me, it's something pretty important and it's good to have our input, that's all. You don't, and it was always in there and we always, and we did that. The provision, position of the township or of the lawyer was, well, you guys never do this, so why bother? Well, then we do do it.
It involves a change of.
No, it's an expansion of an existing nonconforming use.
Of land.
Structure.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me, see the confusion.
Use, nonconforming, it's a nonconforming use of a building or structure.
No, it's not.
That's what it says right here, a nonconforming use of a building or structure.
In the first sentence, and I don't oppose the first sentence. We're not reviewing the first sentence. The planning, it's, I'm not suggesting the planning commission needs to weigh in on whatever's in that first sentence. Jamie, I, I'm going to repeat my request and I'll make it in whatever form, as an individual or not. We have had extended, there's been an extensive discussion of this provision. There's been saying, well, we're not sure what you're talking about. Maggie and I.
Yeah, I mean, there's no consensus here tonight. It doesn't sound like to me, right? The motion didn't go through, so we're going to have to like talk about this next month.
On that point, I think the whole, that whole provision, whether it's in now or months from now, needs to be on the list of things that get looked at. I don't want to bela-, I don't want to belabor it, I don't want to mess up the, this process going forward and getting done. However, it just seems very, very clear that this provision is very ambiguous. Number, but I do want to respond to Maggie's last point and just reiterate to the other members of the board that, let me just finish, that the nonconforming use of a building or structure is in the first sentence. That is not going to the zoning hearing board on special exceptions. The second sentence deals with nonconforming use of a lot or land may be extended or enlarged when authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board. That's the use of the land or lot, not a nonconforming use of a building or structure. That is not going to, the nonconforming uses of a building or structure are not.
David, my only point was that you keep, only that the language you keep using is a change of use.
I'm sorry.
And it's not a change of use, it's an enlargement of a nonconforming use.
Of a lot or land.
Yes, and, and it's very, it duly noted that that is your objection to the language there. I just want.
No, my objection is to taking out the planning commission.
Uh, yes, yes, yes. No, but no, now your objection is to further, is to further review that because you find that to be confusing.
No, 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 that's not tonight, not tonight.
Continue to say change of use and I didn't want it to be confusing for everybody because we're not talking about a change of use.
I guess I'm basing my thinking on the history of this township. And my own experience, let me just add this last sentence. The history of this township is nonconforming uses under the doctrine of expansion get changed. And I am very concerned about that. If you walk around the neighborhood, you will see lots of things that were changed uses, not expansions by any definition.
Okay.
But that's a big problem in this township.
No, that's a valid point. That's a valid point and that is, I think, the purview of the zoning officer to have identified that through the review process. I think that we have very capable people who can manage that. I, yes, that is a concern and I agree and I appreciate you pointing that out, but for tonight, it's not a change of use.
You're correct. It's an expansion or enlargement.
Yes.
Which under that guise can often be called a change. Mischief can be done. My only point tonight, I'm not trying to rewrite the whole thing, I'm not trying to make a major revision. My only point tonight is I think it's a good idea not to remove what was there before, that's all. Which was review and approve, review by the planning, review and recommendation, isn't it?
Well, it's a recommendation for.
Following review and recommendation by the planning commission.
That's all.
Okay, so we had.
I don't think it interferes with the planning commission, the zoning hearing board. And B, I think it's a good idea for us to know that it's going on and put in our two cents.
Okay, so there was a motion, there was a second, there was one a, one yea, one nay.
But I thought we should have discussion of the motion before people reneg and change their vote. Could we re, I made that argument, do you want to discuss it further?
Is there, is there ready?
Put it back in.
Yes, yes, I do because it has everything to do with anybody who wants to revise or anything that has to do with land should go to the planning of a courtesy because that's what the planning commission is all about.
As Maggie said, it's expansion, not use, not change of use, but.
You feel comfortable with that?
Two, it's, it's two to one. Maggie, do you change or you, you don't want a planning commission review?
No.
Okay, so it's two to one. One abstention.
Okay. You abstain?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, I'm sorry, you have to say it. Okay.
And to, just to say again, uh, to the township, Jamie, when, whenever, not now, I'm not saying before you submit this to the board of commissioners, but at some point, this, this provision has problems. Lots of things in the code have problems, so I would just be sure this is on the list as well. It is confusing.
All right, I think that wraps it up. For this discussion.
Is there any other, I sure does. Is there any other? By the way, it's a good faith discussion, I think it's a healthy thing to kick these things around.
You still have review of minutes?
Minutes of, thank you, minutes of September 10th, 2024. I, I just want to add, I thought it was a good job on dealing, Jamie and John, I thought did a very good job of on a difficult task. Wordsmithing is hard. I mean, it's more than wordsmithing, but it's hard. The minutes of September 10th, 2024, are there any changes to the minutes? Any? I'll take a motion to approve the minutes if there are none. I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will abstain as I was absent.
Minutes are approved. Three to nothing with one abstention.
Got it.
Entertained a motion, is there any other new business, good and welfare, anything? People want to comment on hearing none, I'll, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Your second.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.